Good evening. I call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Our invocation today is Deacon Dick Smith from Church of the Ascension Roman Catholic Church. Hi, Dick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Wait a minute, this isn't Messengers. Good evening.[40.11][40.11](laughter) Why do we put ourselves in the presence of the Lord? Almighty God, we are so grateful for the many gifts that you continually bestow on us. We thank you for the gift of this town, if you have seen her. We're also very grateful, Lord, for our council, for our mayor Linda and all the council members. We ask you, Lord, to please look after them, and please help them and this whole community in their decision-making tonight and every day of the week. We ask you, Christ our Lord, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Roll call, please, Beth. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Magazine.
Here.
Councilmember DePorter.
Here.
Councilmember Yates.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Tolles.
Here.
And Councilmember Leger. All right, we'll start off with our proclamation for Fountain Hills Day of Prayer. Whereas the town of Fountain Hills was joined together with the entire country on May 4th, 2017, to celebrate the 66th anniversary of the National Day of Prayer. And whereas Congress by Public Law 100-307 has called on our citizens to reaffirm the role of prayer in our society, and to honor the religious diversity that our freedom permits by recognizing a national day of prayer. And whereas we are ever mindful of the heroic men and women of our armed forces, especially those serving abroad and in harm's way. And whereas we pray for God's blessing, for our governments at town, state, and national levels, to shower us with strength and wisdom in order to meet the challenges before us, and to work together to bring hope for our community, and to enhance the well-being of all citizens and families of Fountain Hills. And whereas, and we pray for strength and divine direction in our educational systems, community businesses, media, and our places of worship. And whereas uniting in prayer gives all people of faith, regardless of their denominations or religion, an opportunity to join fellow citizens in celebrating the power and love of God and our perpetual responsibility to Him and to others. Now therefore, I, Lyndon M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2017 as Fountain Hills Day of Prayer. Thank you.[233.12][233.12](applause). Oh. I was wondering why you were all here.[240.62][240.62](laughter) All right. Thank you. Great. Okay. All right. Now we will go to Mayor and Council review of certain events. We have one report on that, and that is from Councilman Artolos for the Fountain Hills Coalition.
Thank you, Mayor. The Coalition wrapped up their last meeting of the school year, and will be reconvening in August. They did a fantastic job this year. They went over all of the statistics in regards to the drug use, alcohol use, substance abuse of all kinds in our district and overall in Arizona, and all significantly down. And they're doing a great job with outreach, and trying to be out in the paper, and be known throughout the community as a valuable organization that's going to help our youth to stay off of drugs and alcohol, and to be the best they can be. So, great organization, glad to be part of it and represent the town on that committee.
Oh, thank you, Councilman Tolles. And now we go on to recognition first of retiring Community Service Director Mark Mayer for his 15-plus years of service to the town of Fountain Hills. I think Grady has something to say about Mark?
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the public who are here tonight, we are saddened, we were saddened to learn about Mark's planned retirement. He is, as the mayor indicated, been with the town for many years, over 15-plus years. And during that time, he has accomplished a great number of great things for the town. As you know, when he started working here over 15 years ago, we were relatively new town, and we started expanding, getting into a lot of different services and programs, and adding a lot of amenities to our community. And so, I'd be remiss if I didn't go through and just kind of read out all these, because I wouldn't be able to do this from my memory. First off, I'd like to just acknowledge that he has overseen the completion of several phases of Fountain Park, Desert Vista Park, and Four Peaks Park. The Fountain Park amenities include the splash pad, musical playground, and numerous electrical upgrades and water quality improvements. Desert Vista Park has an integrated skate park and underwent a dog park renovation recently. Four Peaks Park just completed its first phase with the demolition of the bus barn, and had the tennis courts renovated. And there are a number of other items that are to include more amenities, thanks to his involvement in the master plan for that park. Golden Eagle Park also has had the tennis courts renovated and the basketball courts resurfaced. The tot lot was also replaced with the help of the Kiwanis. We have an urban fit trail, which he was involved in the planning, construction, and oversaw the grand opening of that. Mark has worked closely with the Conservancy for their assistance in maintaining the Botanical Garden trails and the islands and Fountain Lake. Golden Eagle Trailhead was opened, and Adaro Canyon Trailhead Construction will be starting sometime later this summer or early fall. He was very much involved with that initially, with the preliminary design and up to the 100% design, which was just completed. Mark was also instrumental in bringing senior services and home-delivered meals under the umbrella of the town. He also worked with the Public Art Committee in the development of the Centennial Circle, and also numerous pieces of art have been acquired and placed in the town. People don't realize this, but while the Public Art Committee, through the Fountain Hills Civic and Cultural Association, is responsible for a lot of our public art, once they're ready to dedicate and give it to the town, it takes the placement and installation of that. And Mark has overseen all the installations of our public work, our public art pieces over the last several years. Under Mark's direction, the recreation programs and special events have expanded, and recreation tourism have won numerous prestigious awards, with tourism being a relatively new function that was added to his department. Mark, we want to thank you on behalf of the Mayor and Council, and myself, and all the staff, and the community, for a job well done. We will miss you. Thank you.[519.04][519.04](applause). And, Mark, if you could come to the podium, the Mayor and I have a little small token of our appreciation that we'd like to present to you.
Make 'em talk.[538.38][538.38](laughter).
It's a narrator.
Speech. I was just going to say, I don't think the irony is lost on a lot of people when they bring me up on National Day of Prayer. Seems like a little bit of sacrilege to bring me up on National Day of Prayer.[550.82][550.82](laughter) I just, just a couple of words. I want to thank both Mayor and the town manager, Grady, and all the council members, both now, and obviously over 15 years, there have been many, and a lot of changes. If it had not been for your support during difficult financial times, staff cuts, reorganization, all the lists that you heard of the stuff that we've been able to accomplish over that period of time would not have been possible. So, I want to acknowledge that, and appreciate you for all that you've done in previous councils. I mean, this goes back all the way to Paul Norden, was the first interview I had, was Paul Norden. And after 40 years of doing this in five different communities, I thought it was time to step aside and let somebody else take over. So, thank you.[593.29][593.29](applause).
(inaudible).
Okay. Next. Captain Loturno.
Mayor, if I could just say, I just have a few words.[664.12][664.12](laughter) Maybe they'll pay attention to what I'm talking.
Dave, we're talking about you.[668.84][668.84](laughter).
Mayor and Council, I just, I just have a few words I wanted to just say about Captain Loturno. I'm not going to be roasting you, so you can relax.
I'm ready for it, if you do. Be prepared.
As, as everyone knows, we learned recently from Sheriff Penzone that Captain Loturno would be rotated to another assignment as part of an agency-wide rotation of captains. And it's kind of sad in all of us, because we gotten, we have developed a close working relationship with Dave, and Dave with the staff at the town, as well as the council. His last day is actually really officially today, but he's probably going to be packing through the weekend.
Correct.
And our new replacement for him will be coming in to start work on Monday, and that's Captain Hank Brandonmark. So, and he's here, we'll introduce him right after we're done with you, Dave.
Okay.[720.56][720.56](laughter).
But, back to my comments, I just want to let you know that the town has been very fortunate to have Dave serve as our, our captain for the past three years. Under his leadership, Captain Loturno has served as a commander of the Fountain Hills District, which really, in our town, the way that our district works is, unlike other districts in the valley, this is really a police chief role. And Dave has really served as our police chief in exemplary fashion, and I really mean that with all sincerity. Basically, over the last three years, there have been numerous accomplishments and contributions that Dave's made to the organization and to our town. His deputies look to his leadership to provide guidance, and leadership is necessary in the provision of our law enforcement services here. He has been a valued member of the senior management team, and we will forever be grateful to your contributions to the town. Please join me in congratulating Captain Loturno on a job well done.[788.44][788.44](applause).
I really, really appreciate that. And, Grady, you're right, we have accomplished a lot up here. And one of the impressive things, and I didn't know what it would be like coming up here, I'd been out of patrol for a long time, is the teamwork that's up here. You know, when you talk events and some of the things that have happened over the last three years, you can't pull it off without teamwork. We all dive in, we all get our hands dirty, and we pull off magic. I mean, if you, one of the biggest things that could have happened up here, and Fountain Hills was already on the map, but that Donald Trump rally, and no problems, not one. And they can say there was a problem down the road, that wasn't a Fountain Hills problem.[841.32][841.32](laughter) They took care of business, and it was a good event, and it put us on the map out here. For 26 years, I've been with the sheriff's office, and I've had good job after good job. I'm going to a good job. But, this place, I've really liked it here. I love it here. I've told Hank, Hank Brandonmark in the back, he's my replacement, this is a hidden gem up here. If you pay attention to what's going on with the sheriff's office, we're under a compliance order, and it's a, it's a bear, it's a grizzly bear. And I've told Hank and other guys, this situation up here is perfect. It's the perfect size, the squads are perfect, the people, the teamwork, it's a perfect spot. The guys that were here before me want to come back, they're just not able to come back. Joe Rodriguez, I saw him today, he'd like to come back, he's running SWAT. And Dave Munley, who is a lieutenant here, would like, who's now a captain, would like to come back here. So, the word is out, I don't think it's a secret anymore. And I felt very welcome here from day one, and people have said kind words. What are we going to do without you? Welcome, Hank. If you recall, when I first got here, it wasn't all rosy, but in the end, it's been rosy. So, Hank's going to do a good job, you'll see, he'll fit in well, and he'll pick up the teamwork end of it from the sheriff's office, and everything will run smooth. And you'll see me up here, I'll pop up and down here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. And, Dave, we have a small token of our appreciation we're going to present to you.
You know, I have to tell you this very hard, because we were told that he was going to be leaving, and then we didn't have enough time to give him anything, and then we were told it'd be another six weeks he was going to stay, because there was some retirements. And he said, oh, it'll be about another six weeks. And then we just found out on Monday that he was leaving, and that this week would be his last week. So, thanks again, Dave. Really appreciate all your service.
Thanks, everybody.[969.12][969.12](inaudible).
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks again. Take care.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, are you allowed to tell us where you're going and what you'll be doing?
Oh, I can.
Please go to the podium, speaking of the mic.[981.00][981.00](laughter) We're setting you up.
I'm ready for you, Captain. I'm going, I worked a place, it's been about nine years ago, our undercover narcotics team, so we have several teams, where we chase bad guys, we put people in jail, mostly drug-related stuff, taking off loads that come across the border, stuff that goes through the mail, an interdiction program where we actually run drug-sniffing dogs through the mail, through UPS and FedEx. And if you didn't know it, it's illegal to mail marijuana through the mail, so we jump on top of it.
See, I told you.
It's a good job.[1026.75][1026.75](laughter) But, yeah, I've been there before, and I'm going back, and I'm very excited about it. I missed it, I'll miss this place, but I'm excited to go.
Great.
Congratulations.
And, Dave, by the way, for that Trump rally, I just want you to know, we made the New Times Best Traffic Jam category.[1044.02][1044.02](laughter) We got that, too.
And no one got hurt.
That's right.
So, thank you.[1050.65][1050.65](applause).
And, Mayor, if I may, if Captain Brandonmark can just step up, I know we will do a formal introduction to the community at the next regular council meeting, but while you're here, might as well just go ahead and have it.
Thank you for letting me serve your community. I take it as a privilege to come up here. As I spoke with Mr. Miller over the phone, I come from District 2, which is probably our largest patrol district. I have three councils that I report to over there, so I'm very familiar with some of the process. I'm a little anxious about coming here, because I've never worked in Fountain Hills before, so I have a lot to learn in a very short amount of time, but I'm sure you'll be very happy with the collaboration that I bring. So, thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I like your first name.[1120.14][1120.14](laughter) It's a, it's a name of kings. You said it.[1125.83][1125.83](laughter) If anyone has any questions, I certainly would answer them.
Yep. We have Sheriff Penzone coming next Wednesday for a town hall, so we hope to see you there also.
Yes, I will be there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, thanks so much.[1142.71][1142.71](applause).
Okay. Now we have, do you have any speaker cards? No, Mayor. No, so we'll go into our consent agenda. We have three. Can I get a motion to accept as written?
Mayor, so moved.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Regular agenda item. For items four and five, there will be one staff report. Speaker cards will be on number four only, and for four and five will be on number four. So, with that, I open the public hearing to receive comments on a proposed special-use permit to allow Verizon Wireless to install a 34-inch? No, that's supposed to be foot, I would think, tall faux-water tower.
That would be terrible.
Hello?
You see what a misprint can do? Water tower, cellular antenna at the Adaro Canyon entry gatehouse site. Grady and Bob.
I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Rogers, who will be giving the staff report on, on this particular item.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. You're correct, Verizon Wireless is proposing to install a cellular antenna array inside a faux-old-style water tower in parcel 10A of Adaro Canyon. Parcel 10A is the relatively small parcel that creates the median island in Eagle Ridge Drive right-of-way. This parcel is the location of the Adaro Canyon gatehouse. The water tower structure is proposed to be installed north of the gatehouse parking area. The special-use permit is required for two reasons. The water tower will be 34 feet tall, and the height limit in that district is 25 feet tall. The height limit may be exceeded if an appropriate stealth design is used, and this special-use permit has to determine that this stealth design is appropriate for the area. Also, the tower is within 300 feet of a residential district. It's approximately 100 feet to the PAD MF or multifamily district in parcel 10, which is across the street. The special-use permit must approve allowing that reduced setback as well. In addition to that, there's a waiver request, there's a 100% fall-down requirement from any property line. In this case, it would be 34 feet. Only 17 feet is being provided. So, this is, this is a waiver request, it's not part of the special-use permit requirement. And it's noted in the staff report that a building setback in this area is 15 feet, and that the town council could make a recommendation regarding the appropriateness of allowing that setback, rather than the 17 feet, or the 34-foot for the fall-down. Planning and zoning commission found that, in their opinion, the building setback requirement of 15 feet meets the general intent of the fall-down ordinance, that the stealth design is appropriate for the area, and that the tower's location within 100 feet of the residential district will not be detrimental to the neighborhood or the surrounding area. The commission then voted 5 to 2 to forward a recommendation to the town council to approve the proposed 34-foot-tall cellular antenna to be installed within the faux-water tower structure as presented. The staff also recommends approval as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, questions for Bob? Any comments?
Mayor, if I may, Bob, I believe this is in the pack, but the developer up there, MCO, what, what is their position on this stealth tower?
My last conversation with Jeremy Hall regarding this was that he was in favor of it.
Okay. And you have Toll and another builder up there, any feedback from them?
I've not heard anything from Camelot or Toll Brothers.
You know, if they're aware of this proposed structure?
They're aware of it, yes. They were notified.
So, there's been no input there? Okay. I would certainly have preferred a 34-inch tower, but I'm not a proponent of these steels all over the place. I think a lot of this technology's going to be, I could turn to a high-tech guru at the end there, obsolete in several years. But I guess my position on this would be that it's going to be a pre-existing condition for people that are moving into that area, so they know what, what they're getting when they're buying in that area. So, that kind of softens my position a little, so, thank you.
Councilman Yates.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, if it does fall, 34 feet, what would it potentially encroach on or fall onto at a later date?
If it falls, it's going to fall into the road.
So, the 15-feet, Madam Mayor, I don't want to say it's arbitrary, but it's just because that's what's in this area so far, so the additional...
15 feet is a building setback.
Okay.
The 100% fall-down requirement is for a cell tower. This is kind of a hybrid of both, I suppose, because the cell tower's actually hiding inside the structure.
But ultimately, my question is that no time is another structure in danger in any way, shape, or form if it were to fall down?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Anything else?
Mayor.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I participated in building the welcome center, the gatehouse, as you refer to it, and along with that, I participated with Jeremy Hall in coming up with the idea of the water tank, the water tower. And it is rather clever. I think it fits the motif of the entire entrance to Adaro Canyon, and the idea of having a water tower over a saguaro that doesn't look like a saguaro is much more appealing to me. So, I will be supporting this.
Councilman Magazine.
Bob, can you tell us what the objectives were of the two P and D members who voted against this?
I couldn't get what they said.
I believe his question was, why did the two no votes? What were they about? Amber Lee is here, and she was one of the no votes, and she can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was it was more of an aesthetic issue, and that they were not necessarily agreeing that it was in keeping with the area or the aesthetics of the town as a whole.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment? Councilman DePorter?
My only comment, I mean, it's not my favorite aesthetically, but a 40-foot-tall fake saguaro does tend to stick out a lot. I guess my, my biggest concern is the fall idea. I don't know if, it's sure it falls in the road, but I don't know what kind of liability the town has for granting a waiver, and it lands on a car at some point. Does it come back to the town, because we said, I'm assuming that's the case.
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember DePorter, everything comes back to the town. And in that instance, the town would be named in a lawsuit, along with Verizon, along with whoever built the tower itself, and then we'd all have to hash it out as to who was really responsible.
Okay. Well, I think it looks a lot better than those palm trees. It don't look like palm trees. It's, it's a clever way to try, to try to hide it and to fit in with the overall Adaro Canyon theme. So, I, I think it's, I think it's a good, it's a good thing. Anybody else?
Mayor, just one final question, if I may. Okay, so, in terms of the purpose, I understand the placement of that tower. And being in that canyon, do you know going forward if there's going to be a requirement for additional type of equipment to enhance signals for folks as you move up the canyon?
I believe there will be. The applicant is here, he maybe will answer it better than I am.
I'd, I'd be interested in that, if, if we could take a minute with that. Future plans for future technology up there to enhance the signal?
Yes, sir. My name's Rick Shaw for Verizon Wireless. When we first walked that site, we actually had looked up, if you drive back in there, the hill, the terrain starts to go up, and there's a water tank, oh, kind of way in the back. And we had looked at that area, actually, on, on both sides of the hilltop there, to put antennas in, like a faux-rock facade-type wall, one pointing to the south, and then maybe one later on, if it was needed, pointing off to the north. I think that's still what Verizon would consider later on, but right now, there's nothing to the north, so there wouldn't be anything needed. But if there were homes back there, and Jeremy Hall didn't indicate that at some point, I believe they owned that property back there, and they would want to develop that. So, north of that water tank, you could potentially see another, probably relatively small site. I don't think there's going to be as many homes back there as there are in this area, because you have the Copperwind Resort, you have the Scottsdale subdivision right to the west, and then you have all the homes going in at Adaro Canyon. This site would be covering all of those. It's a very difficult site to, to actually acquire. It's been about almost six years now that we've been working on this location. We've talked to the Copperwind Resort quite a bit, and it just didn't work out. Terrain's kind of tricky in there. Eagle Ridge Drive is, is on a ridge, and in order to get that cell tower situated such that it can, it can cover all those objectives I just mentioned, it had to kind of be right where it is, on, on sort of a semi-high spot, which allows us to keep it lower. And that's why it's only 34 inches or feet, or whichever way you look at it.
See what a typo can do, huh?
Yeah.[1763.11][1763.11](laughter) But that's, that's why it's, we're able to keep it relatively low, and because of where it's at.
Very good. Thank you.
I'm glad it's covering Copperwind, because I know that's been a big problem there.
It is. It is an issue. And all the new, I believe there are apartments or condos that are going in there, all the multifamily stuff is going to be an issue as well. So, it's designed, there's not much there now. The Scottsdale subdivision is, the resort is, but the homes aren't. So, it's built to what is there now, and to be able to handle the future growth in the area. And just on that note, as far as the homes go, the, the rough... And just on that note, as far as the homes go, the rough figures right now are about 40% of homes don't have a landline. So, this would be kind of a critical infrastructure in that area. And with the new trailhead going in, I heard that mentioned in the beginning, it will cover that. That's often a safety issue.
That's great.
Sometimes it's difficult for the carriers to get into those areas because they're remote. But in this case, it's actually probably gonna work out. So, that's a good reason to have this site in that particular area. And the design, we did work really hard on the design, the council member knows. I've worked with Jeremy Hall for almost two or three years now on getting this to where it is and getting it looking as good as possible. And I just drove by there this evening to kind of see an update of where things are and I can see it's definitely gonna match in with the rock facades, the rock walls, the structure of that welcome center. So, I think it's gonna look pretty good. And there's only a few of these water tanks around town. I've tried several times to get one up and this might be the first one that actually goes up, but they do look good. There's gonna be six antennas inside of there. I know the faux-cactus design was talked about at the planning commission meeting and there's a real problem with those. One is how they look, but the other is the limited number of antennas that you can actually get in there. It's usually, it's at most three, usually it's just two. This one will have six, so it'll be able to handle a much larger area. And that's because it's a broader structure. And it's a real advantage to having this type of structure, so you don't have to have two sites in this area to cover a large area. And I think on the note earlier about the future of the wireless industry, there is a lot going on. There was a law passed, signed by the governor a couple of weeks ago, you all may be aware of it, regarding small cells in the right-of-way. That's definitely gonna have a major impact on the industry. It will take some time before these bigger towers start to phase out, could be 10 years, could be 20 years. They're gonna be needed for a while. So, this site in particular, the way that it's set up, there's not, I don't know if there's plans for light poles along that road, that right-of-way, but if there's not, you wouldn't have any verticality to even put out, put out small cell antennas on because there aren't any light poles. So, it's kind of an issue. But that water tank is gonna help out a lot for quite a while.
Okay, thank you. I think Councilman DePorter had a question?
Just two quick questions. Who actually, who receives the rent or the lease money from Verizon for the site?
Our landlord is MCO Properties. That's who we're gonna be signing the lease with and that's almost negotiated now.
And then, this is a curiosity question. As far as these towers go, is there ever reciprocity amongst cellphone carriers where, to your point, there's probably not gonna be any other sites left back there unless there's light poles, but what do we do in AT&amp;T calls?
Well...
Is there room in your tower?
Technically, there is, but as a practical matter, it's gonna be difficult because it is kind of short. They could attach to the outside of the tank, there's no room on the inside, they would have to go on the legs. You may have seen some of those around town, windmills, et cetera, that they'll have antennas on the outside. So, it could support that, it's designed to do that, but it is short. I just don't know if it's gonna meet AT&amp;T or T-Mobile or Sprint's needs in the area. It would be up to them at that point.
Okay. Okay. All right. No speaker cards? Okay, so with that, thank you. Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing, consideration of proposed special use as just presented. Any further council discussion? If not, I'll just take a motion. Okay, so moved and a second?
Second.
All right. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Consideration of resolution 2017-11 authorizing submission of a grant application to the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority for installation of lighting at Desert Vista Skate Park and approving the acceptance and execution of any resulting grant agreement and authorizing the expenditure for the town's portion in the amount of $23,800. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the item before you is for authorization to submit a grant application to the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority. A little bit of background on this item. Probably about a month ago or so, the staff and I met to identify needs that we currently have that we would like to go after grants for. As you recall, last year, we successfully went after and received the grant from the same organization that helped us with the tennis courts. That was a significant grant. One of the things that we identified was a major need and that was to have lighting at the Desert Vista Skate Park. We believe that that will really significantly improve the utilization of that. And for us to go through with this, it would be $70,000 that we would have to pay for this if we were to do it on our own. With the grant application and it being a one-third match from us, to match that would be roughly $23,000. So, this is kind of a no-brainer and I think we really stand a really good chance in the next grant cycle to receive the grant. But I'm gonna go ahead and call on Acting Community Services Director Rachel Goodwin to come up and give a little bit more on this report and then be available to answer any questions the council may have on this.
Thanks, Grady. That was a great overview. Grady hit most of the high points there. I can answer any questions. Really, we identified the skate park. The lighting concern is that it's an amenity, one of the few amenities in our town that is limited to just daytime hours. It's a popular amenity, especially in the cooler weather. And we see upwards of 50 or 60 kids over there daily, especially during the wintertime. But it's also the most limited time of year, obviously, because the sun sets sooner. So, we'd like to consider the addition of lighting to extend that use. Keep in mind that it's more than just a skate park, it serves not only skateboarders, but inline skaters, scooters, and bikes as well. So, it's a pretty multipurpose facility. With that, Grady covered most of the highlights. Do you have any questions?
Yes, Councilman Yates?
Thank you, Mayor. The type of lights? Is the grant covering LEDs? Is there a regulation on what type of light fixtures, et cetera?
We will try to be as aggressive with that as we can. We want it to obviously fit what's already in the park as well, so that it's consistent. But we would be looking at LED and as technologically advanced as possible. We have gotten a basic quote from our lighting company, Musco, which is what has given us that $70,000 kind of earmarked.
Gotcha. Madam Mayor, along the same lines of the timeframe, I know a lot of times it's easier or lose it and that's good, we're setting this aside now. But in the event, as you know, in the grant world, I call it stacking grants. Grants allow you, whatever your contribution is, it is what it is. And sometimes you can use other grants to show your participation. Is there enough time to look at whether it be a solar grant or some sustainable energy grants or anything like that to stack a couple more grants?
We can do that, this is a stackable grant. The timeline for this is it would be submitted in May, pending approval tonight. The award notification generally comes in early fall, so August, September timeframe. And by October, we have to show that we have the funding secured. So, it's not that much of a window. If we are able to find something in that timeframe, we can. But the award, we have to accept in October and show funding. And then by December, we have to have an executed agreement with them, so that as of January 1st, 2018, is when we can actually start the construction.
And don't get me wrong, 70/30 is phenomenal, that's tremendous. Anyway, thank you, Mayor. Good job.
Councilman DePorter?
I was gonna applaud the staff's ongoing efforts to find grant money. I think that's amazing. As far as the selection of park, I think it's spot-on. I mean, you'd be surprised to hear that people will jump the fence and just use it anyways. Teenagers never do stuff like that. So, it provides safety and extended hours, which I think is great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm moved to adopt resolution 2017-11 approving a grant application and funding for the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority Youth and Amateur Sports Biennial Grant. Mayor, a second?
Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay, then all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, we're up to number seven, discussion with possible direction to staff related to any item included in the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Weekly Legislative Bulletin. Grady, anything?
I have no report tonight on this.
Okay, I don't have anything either. Anybody else? Okay, and now we will go to direction to town manager. We have none, so we have a couple of activities. I'm gonna go first to Councilman Yates.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I was able to attend the morning Rotary, Four Peaks Rotary meeting and pretty much give an economic snapshot update. And just to share some of that information, Fountain Hills is approximately 24,000 people. The median age right now is 55 years old and the average household income is just over $100,000. Our budget, as we're beginning to discuss, is being proposed about $34 million, which is probably the best per capita in the valley. Some other highlights, right now, our housing stock, today's on-market prices, the average is $753,000 for an average-priced home on the market in Fountain Hills. The average sold house in the last six months is just under $410,000. And if you got rid of all the mansions and got rid of all the condos and just looked at an average three-bedroom, two-bath, 2,500 square feet, on-market, it's $417,000 average and of the solds, just under $360,000. So, this is both good and bad. It's kind of what we've all been talking about. We've got a solid stock of housing, but it's not inexpensive. And I can go on with some other things, but as we all know, this is something that will be an ongoing discussion as we talk economics, but just a quick snapshot. But I wanted to thank the Four Peaks Rotary for hosting, it was a wonderful event and good discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I've got some things. First, the Extravaganza, one of our premier events for kids in our town, but also draws from nearby city. The event is so important to promote our town as a family-friendly place to live. The success of this annual program is solely due to the hard work of the community services and the park staff, both before and after the event. This year, they outdid themselves, coming up with even more great ideas to better the program. This year, the staff divided up the age groups on the three fields to allow equal competition for gathering the eggs. They also kept the parents at bay. They had a very nice backdrop for Hoppy Bunny for pictures. The staff also took pictures of the families with Hoppy and made them available on the town website. What a brilliant idea to not only give the families a special memory, but to drive their interest to our website. So, I want to congratulate the community services and the park staff for their hard work in making this family event not only a huge success again, but for always striving to make it better. And speaking of Hoppy Bunny, Hoppy made a stop at Fountain View Village again this year to visit with the residents there, who provided an icon to stuffed animal and treats for the McDowell Mountain preschool kids. Related to Sister Cities, I want to thank Council Bogromil and Elizabeth Horsham for hosting a dinner at their home for the families and those students who will be traveling to Poland. The students will visit our newest sister city, Samosh. The Silver Rose Ceremony, ceremony that honors Vietnam veterans who have suffered debilitating and fatal diseases due to exposure to Agent Orange. To this day, the federal government has never acknowledged that Agent Orange illnesses are wartime injuries that justify Purple Hearts for those afflicted. So, they had the ceremony at the American Legion where the Silver Rose Organization presents each of these veterans or sadly, in many cases, to the surviving spouse or child, a medal acknowledging their wartime industries in place of the Purple Heart. I offered to help the Legion to petition our new president, Donald Trump, to ask for recognition for these veterans. At the Legion also, they thanked the town for its help with the Legion Riders motorcade that preceded the ceremony. And lastly, the Easter Sunrise Service filled Fountain Park with hundreds of people at 6:00 AM. The organizers especially wanted me to thank the town for its assistance once again in helping to make this event a success. And that's all I have, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, so moved.
Yeah, a second? No, he said second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.